Test 1, 2
Test 1, 2
Testing, testing, testing. Testing English, testing English. Testing, testing.
Thank you for your patience. We will now begin the next session.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. If I could ask members of council to take their seat. On va commencer la réunion dans une minute. We'll be starting the meeting in a minute. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Bonjour mesdames et messieurs.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Ottawa City Council meeting for us Wednesday, the 20th of September 2016.
Meeting on the 20th of September 2016. For those who are able to, could you please rise for a moment of personal reflection and remain standing for the National Anthem? If you could remain standing as we ask councillor Taylor to introduce our very special guests who are here to sing our National Anthem.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, colleagues. I present to you the Northwest One Choir, organized for us today by Janine Jennings and under the leadership of Mary Anne Dunn, an established choir director of 25 years. In 2011, the social committee of the Northwest One apartment complex expressed their desire to have a residence choir which would perform at annual Christmas events. With only 11 members and no official director, it was a rather tentative effort for that first year. However, they persisted and grew in numbers, worked hard, and with the addition of some professional musicians in their midst, now enough confidence to branch out. Last year, in addition to their Christmas program, they performed a concert of war and peace music for Remembrance Day. It was so well received by the residents of their two buildings that they are repeating the event again this year. They have performed the Christmas program for some old Forge clients and have been asked to present their current war and remembrance program at an upcoming Sunday night light event in Bell's Corners. It's now an honor for them to perform here our National Anthem for city council and for us today. The Monday morning practices are a great way to start the week, they tell me, and they look forward to them. It's fun, relaxed time, but keeps their minds sharp and working. Ladies and gentlemen, the Northwest One Choir.
Well, thank you very much to the choir from Northwest One. I'm one of your neighbors down the street. It's very nice to have you here at City Hall. Merci d'accepter notre invitation.
Thank you for having accepted our invitation this morning.
To invite Jonah Castro to the podium for this council meeting's Mayor City Builder Award. Mr. Castro and Mr. Castro's councillor Riley Brockington to join us as well. Je voulais aussi son conseil Riley Brockington.
I also invite his councillor Riley Brockington.
And friends, your wife and kids, and the former mayor of Napier, Mary Pitt, is with us. Thank you, Mary, for being with us. And Maria Ricci, who nominated you. Randy is representing the Honorable Bob Shirelli, who very much wanted to be here, but as you know, the legislature is sitting today. Highly respected in his community for his business acumen as well as his community involvement, Mr. Castro has worked actively to improve the quality of life for generations of new Canadians. As a longtime entrepreneur, Mr. Castro owns several locations of Nikastro Fine Foods across the city. Entrepreneur de longue date.
As a longtime entrepreneur, Mr. Castro owns several locations of Nikastro Fine Foods across the city.
...employ many residents, but due to Mr. Castro's leadership, they are community hubs which support and foster many local associations, organizations, and charities. He has served as a board of director member at Villa Marconi, where he led the capital campaign bringing the vision of a local Italian-Canadian long-term care center to fruition. And anyone who's gone to the wonderful Villa Marconi knows what a beautiful, caring place it is, and thanks to Mr. Castro and his team who helped to raise funds for that important cause. He even still finds time to be a volunteer committee member at Villa Marconi to improve the lives of all the residents of that wonderful facility.
He even still finds time to be a volunteer committee member at Villa Marconi in order to improve the lives of all residents there.
Mr. Castro has helped to found both the Circolo Recreativo Cletto and the Milan Club of Ottawa while supporting St. Anthony's Church and numerous other local committee associations and charities. Mr. Castro has truly managed to help build the local economy with an international sensibility. These many efforts have made significant contributions to the social, cultural, and recreation fabric of our city.
His many efforts have made significant contributions to the social, cultural, and recreational fabric of our city.
Ottawa City Council. It's my pleasure to present you on behalf of your colleague, my colleague councillor Brockington, and all members of council, the Mayor City Builder Award for doing such great work in our community. We're really proud of you, Joe. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Come on up, we'll just take a picture here.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you to be here. Mayor Jimmy Watson and councillor Riley Brockington. Thank you for this wonderful honor. I'm very grateful to be recognized for my contribution in making Ottawa a better place. Ottawa has been giving me so much over the last 50 years, and it has been my pleasure to give back. I continue to be committed to this wonderful city and look forward to the years to come. I like thanks all the person to nominate me. Thank you very much. Merci.
Thank you very much. Grazie.
And again, thank you to Mr. Castro, his family and friends. It's great to have you here. I should remind members of the public and members of council, today is the launch of our One Young World conference. This is an international conference that is bringing together 1,300 business, young leaders in business, labor, arts, science, engineering. And if you do see some of the delegates in and about the community, go up and introduce yourselves. Thank the volunteers, we have hundreds of volunteers. And I invite all members of council and members of the public to the opening ceremony tonight, which is taking place at 6 o'clock on Parliament Hill. It's free of charge. The Prime Minister will be speaking, and there'll be a number of other international well-known figures that will be commenting, and you'll see this parade of flags where there's, I believe, 196 countries represented. So I want to thank Ottawa Tourism. They're spearheading this particular international conference, and we're very proud and honored to have it here. There are over 200 members of the international media, so it's a great opportunity to showcase our city on the eve, really, of 2017.
It's an opportunity for all members of council as well of the public to participate in the opening ceremony this evening at 6:00 PM. It's free, the Prime Minister will be there to speak, and other members of the community that are responsible for One Young World. It's an opportunity for us to say thank you to all the volunteers and all those who will be participating. Appel nominal, Madame La Gravia-Joint, s'il vous plaît.
Councillor Middick. Councillor Harder, here. Councillor Wilkinson, present. Councillor El Shantiri.
Present.
Councillor Cadri.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Egley.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney. Conseiller Fleury.
Ici.
Councillor Newsbaum. Councillor McKenney.
Present.
Councillor Leeper.
Here.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Chernoshenko.
Present.
Conseiller Cloutier.
Present.
Conseiller Blay. Councillor DeRousse.
Here.
Councillor Moffett.
Here.
Councillor Kakish.
Present.
Councillor Hubley.
Present.
Mayor Watson.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Confirmation, adoption of the process verbal confirmation of minutes 14.
Confirmation.
2016. Carried. Declarations of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings. Declaration de conflits d'intérêts.
Declarations of conflicts of interest, aucun.
Presented. Regrets, we have regrets from councillors Middick, Newsbaum, and Tierney advising us they be absent from the city council meeting of the 28th of September 2016. Motion to introduce reports. Motion important presentation de rapport.
Motion to introduce report.
Conseiller Cloutier, signed by councillor Wilkinson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That the report from the Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation entitled Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation OCLDC 2015 Annual Report. The report from the city clerk and solicitor entitled Status Update: Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending 23rd September 2016. Le rapport numéro 17, Committee des Services.
Protective Services, Community Protective Service Committee Report 17, and Planning Committee Report 31, to be received and considered.
Carried, adopté, merci. A report. Community Land Development Corporation Société d'Aménagement Détailleur Communitaire d'Autrevoir. We have a presentation by the chair, councillor Wilkinson. Councillor, thank you for chairing the corporation, and we welcome your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a few slides that will sort of outline some of the things we do, because this is a corporation of the city that we don't hear from very often. So the Community Lands Development Corporation and its board of directors are happy to present with you and share our annual report for 2015. The corporation was established to take parcels of city-owned land that had development potential and meet our objectives of providing a financial return to the city while meeting the social, environmental, and cultural needs of communities. The corporation's board and staff are shown on the slide, and I'm joined here by Gord McNair, the secretary-in-chief operating officer of the corporation. And as chair, I'm proud of the accomplishments to date, and I'm pleased to present the financials in the report and audit financial statements today. So in 2015, the target was to contribute $5.5 million to the city. Two sales were completed for a total of $5.8 million, exceeding our target by $300,000. These sales are shown on the slides. 5731 Hazling Road, we received full asking price on this property, and it's now being developed under a community-based concept plan to deliver a seniors' living community. And through sale, a portion of the land was retained by the city, which protected the urban natural lands that are part of the Pool Creek Open Space Corridor, which serves as a connecting link through the community. For 2,500 San Leon Boulevard, we also achieved market value while maintaining council's direction to ensure development will provide employment. Their proposal is for an industrial condominium development tied to concept plan that ensures high design standards. I've pointed out, we're also on track to generate a total of $22 million during this term of council, and the auditors report has confirmed that the finances of OCLDC conform to accounting standards. Mr. Mayor, members of council, our community lands is committed to promoting community improvements in the city of Ottawa that is based not only on the financial awards, but to contribute to the social, environmental, and cultural needs of communities. Hence, we're committed on sale of surplus properties to achieving optimal values relating to both financial and non-financial community values. Just to give you some ideas that have happened over the last few years, we have facilitated development sites for institutional uses such as places of religion. We promote a development of a range of residential housing types catering to changing demographics. We facilitate the development of nonprofit housing through allocating lands for this purchase, and I think some of you wrote to see what's happening out in Barhaven on that. We protected 17 hectares of natural environment area and parkland and provided parks and contributed to recreational facilities. We create environmental benefits through progressive sustainable development measures. We increased municipal tax base. We also eliminated the carrying costs for aged and surplus city assets that were just sitting there and not creating any revenue for the city. And we promoted transit-oriented development and innovative transit traffic solutions. So we're continuing to move forward with other properties now, and when there are properties in any of your awards, we will always let you know what is going on on those properties, and we do hold public consultations where required. We kind of act like a developer, but usually we don't actually do the building, we do the creation of the land to make it suitable for development purposes. So we're happy to answer any questions, and I have Gord McNair here who can answer any that are more technically oriented.
Great, thank you very much councillor Wilkinson and Mr. McNair. Conseiller Fleury, s'il vous plaît.
Councillor Fleury, yes, Mr. Mayor. My question is specifically on the $5.8 million that we're getting out of this. These funds, are they paid into the general fund or into a specific account?
I'm just kind of weak.
Oh, sorry, sorry about that. So the $5.8 million that was brought in, it goes into general revenues or it's...
That's right. Yeah, it goes into general revenue. So that is the net proceeds after we pay all of our expenses. So that's the actual amount that we ended up, because we do have costs, we pay staff people, we do some studies and various things to make these ready for development. But the net amount that we did this year was $5.8, and it went into general revenue, which is helping to fund... And when we sell residential properties, 25% of that money we make there goes into the fund that is used for social housing, as you probably know, the same as any other property. We also do that, too. So some of these, these properties were not residential properties. When we have residential properties, that money goes towards the fund that I know you use in Ottawa Community Housing.
Okay, this is more of a comment, and I do see the importance right now, based on our financial situation, to bring it into the general revenue, but I think over time we should look at potentially an endowment fund of some sort to see long-term benefits of these sales, but that's more of an open-ended comment here. Thanks.
Merci. Councillor McKenney, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you councillor Wilkinson for that. I just had a question on a specific site. It was the Randall site, and my understanding is that that site has been on our sites for social housing for some time, that there's been some, some of our stakeholders have had an interest in that site for some time, and I just wonder what those conversations were, if we were, or if we have just...
A little money.
Not sure what the process is, if it's been, you know, if it's been kind of slated for social housing then, how does that, how do we, how do we balance our social component for our financial component of our mandate, I guess is what I'm asking.
The lands that the city has surplus are circulated to, in within the city first before they are actually transferred to the Ottawa Community Lands Development. So it's actually a transfer of the asset that comes into place. That particular one, there was an interest by the church there, I met with them, I met with many assorted staff. They, our mandate is to get market value for properties. We're not allowed to give surpluses once they have been passed to us. So 25% of that sale did go into the fund for community housing, and I can pass it on to Gord, Mr. McNair, who had some of the discussions with the city on this before, because it was actually looked at by the city before it was passed on to us.
Okay.
Yes, just to add to what Chair Wilkinson said, in the past, that specific site on Randall was held for affordable housing purposes. And then after discussions with the Affordable Housing Group, it was agreed that it wasn't an ideal development site, they had other parties in the area. So what we agreed at that time was to move forward with the potential sale of the property with the proceeds 25% going to the affordable housing. So that's where we are right now. I can't talk a lot about what's happened, because it is an OCLDC matter, but we have moved through a process to sell our property, and essentially we do have paper on it, and we're scheduled to close next year with 25% of the sale proceeds to go to affordable housing.
So just to clarify then, at what point do we involve our housing stakeholders who may have an interest in a site? I understand that it's not the corporations that, for you to provide it at a lower, you know, less than market value, but at what point do we involve our affordable and social housing stakeholders in that discussion?
We involve them in the very early stages. As a matter of fact, what happens as far as the process, any city asset that's going to be looked at as far as potential disposal, what we do is we go through a circulation process, and housing is always circulated on that. And if they put up their hand, we have discussions with them, and we put it on hold for their particular needs. Once they waive, we then move forward to sell it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks councillor. Councillor Brockington, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and good morning. Thank you for your report. Are all properties that have been deemed surplus to the city of Ottawa's needs up for sale now? And if no, how do you prioritize which properties go up for sale over the others?
For the community lands, we only sell ones that are passed on to us, and they are usually the larger parcels that have more development potential, so we can create them for development. I'll let, there are many other small properties throughout the city, and I'll let Gord McNair, because he has two hats. He works for us part-time, but part-time for the city. The community lands pays part of his salary because of the work he does for us, but he also knows the city process.
Thank you, Chair Wilkinson, through the mayor. Basically, there's two streams. We have the regular disposal process, and we have the process dealing with the Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation. An example of the normal process where we have road allowances that are going to be closed, they're non-viable, and that sort of thing. So essentially, what we do in that situation, typically we go to a budding landowner to see if they're interested in selling it. And typically, what we have is... Et typiquement, ce que nous avons est pour des objectifs budgétaires, c'est une ligne de 1,5 million dollars, c'est notre objectif chaque année que nous devons générer. Donc, c'est un objectif. L'autre objectif est le target de la Corporation de développement de la Terre communautaire d'Autreuil, qui est de 5,5 millions dollars. Donc, si c'est des terres de développement primaires où nous sommes en train d'obtenir des objectifs sous notre plan officiel, ce genre de choses, et c'est une site viable, typiquement, cela irait dans la Corporation de développement de la Terre communautaire d'Autreuil.
Donc, pour les terres, en fait, sous la responsabilité de la corporation de vente au marché, êtes-vous complètement marketant toutes les propriétés maintenant sous votre responsabilité ?
Nous avons un certain nombre de propriétés là-bas maintenant. Nous avons un objectif chaque année de ce mandat du Conseil. Il y a des rapports que nous devons faire sur eux, nous devons faire pas seulement des valuations des propriétés, mais nous avons aussi parfois besoin de servir elles, nous devons assurer que tout le road widening, toutes sortes de choses vont se passer avec ça. Donc, nous faisons ce part premier et quand elles seront prêtes à aller au marché et le timing du marché, nous allons au marché. Et le timing du marché aussi détermine ce qui se passe dans l'économie dans l'area. Certaines propriétés vont plus ou moins. À mon contexte, j'étais dans la realité commerciale et j'avais un spécialiste. Donc, avec le travail des employés, nous avons aussi ces credentials, nous essayons de mettre en place le timing quand c'est mieux. Et parfois, nous avons besoin de réunions publiques. Parfois, nous avons des réunions avec les conseillers locales pour aider à trouver quel type de plan de développement, juste comme un développeur le ferait. Donc, cela prend du temps de le faire. Nous avons environ, je pense, trois qui travaillent maintenant pour l'année prochaine. Elles ne sont pas encore prêtes à partir et même quand vous les avez, il y a toujours des conditions à répondre et diverses choses avant qu'elles ne ferment et que nous obtenions les fonds.
Est-ce que votre objectif financier annuel, 5,5 millions par an, chaque année de ce mandat, est le même ?
C'est vrai, le total est de 22 millions dollars et nous sommes en train de regarder le dernier mandat du Conseil, nous avons excessé l'amount que nous avons projeté par quelque peu et cette année, cette année, nous sommes en train de faire passer les 22 millions et peut-être un peu plus.
Ok, merci beaucoup.
Merci, conseiller Cadri, s'il vous plaît.
Merci beaucoup, M. Le Maire. Juste pour commenter, M. Le Maire, si je peux, sur la propriété qui était en vente sur Hazel Dean Road. Je veux reconnaître l'effort que M. McNair a fait en travaillant avec mon bureau, aussi que en travaillant avec l'avenir propriétaire de terre, sur la protection de certains de ces corridors pour le quartier Pool Creek et pas tout le terrain, mais certains de la terre parce que les exigences de protection pour le pool Creek. Donc, je veux vous remercier pour cela et l'autre chose est aussi travailler avec un propriétaire de terre approprié en termes de prochain usage de cette pièce de propriété. Et si je peux ajouter, M. Le Maire, le fait que le département a travaillé très bien avec mon bureau parce que cette propriété était en vente même avant que Hazel Dean Road soit étalé et même à ce stade, nous avons assuré que les besoins de la ville étaient regardés en termes de largeur de Hazel Dean Road. Et encore, regarder les intérêts de la ville d'abord et puis aussi quand vous disposez d'une propriété, vous regardez les intérêts de la ville sur une base en cours. Donc, merci beaucoup et merci, M. Le Maire.
Très bien, merci conseiller Cadri. Conseiller Kakish, s'il vous plaît.
Merci, maire. Je me demandais si nous pouvions obtenir une rapide vue en termes de plans à long terme pour la ville, en termes de ce que nous avons de surplus de terres et à combien de temps il va y avoir pour se débarrasser de toutes ces terres. Comment est-ce que ce processus est analysé sur une base annuelle, mais en termes de mandat que vous avez été donné pour vendre les terres que nous n'avons pas besoin, quel est le résultat en termes de plan à long terme ?
Nous allons probablement finir par perdre de la terre, mais il y a en fait un certain nombre de parcelles qui ne doivent pas être conservées pour des fins civiques, c'est le potentiel, et même des zones environnementales comme nous possédons beaucoup de terres environnementales, nous ne touchons pas ça non plus. Mais il y a des terres que les municipalités ont conservées. Mepian a un large bloc qui nous a été développé, il est principalement terminé maintenant. Il y a un large bloc dans mon quart que Canada a acheté, nous sommes sur le préliminaire et travailler sur ça. Donc, cela dépend de ce qui est disponible et est passé à nous et si ils vont toujours avoir des terres surplus, je n'ai aucune idée, mais nous avons certainement assez pour passer quelques années.
M. Le Maire, si je pouvais ajouter à ça, comme a été indiqué, dans ce mandat du Conseil, nous avons définitivement assez de terre pour atteindre le target de 22 millions et je peux vous assurer que mon équipe est déjà en train d'avancer avec le prochain mandat du Conseil pour avoir nos targets en place. Il y a une bonne quantité de terre, nous ne sommes pas préoccupés d'avancer et atteindre nos budgets pour le prochain mandat du Conseil en fonction du banc de terre que nous avons actuellement.
Mais pouvez-vous me donner un sens en termes de deux ans ou hectares que nous avons ? Quand parlons-nous de 10, 15, 20 ans ? Quelle est la timeline prévue en termes de vente de ces choses ? 好的，谢谢， mayor.
Très bien, merci beaucoup et merci à la corporation.
Nous allons envoyer les membres du Conseil ces diapositives, ils peuvent regarder si ils sont intéressés.
好的，是的，我觉得这真的关于合适的时机卖掉，因为我们不会 obviously juste sell land at a fire sales price. Nous voulons obtenir le meilleur usage parce que ces dollars reviennent pour aider la logement affordable et d'autres besoins budgétaires de la ville. Donc, je remercie votre sagesse en mettant les propriétés à l'heure appropriate. Merci. Donc, sur le rapport, item 1 est reçu, item 2 est porté. Merci. Le prochain item, le bureau de la municipalité, municipal...
municipal et sollicitaire.
Rapport de situation, reçu.
À un update, reçu.
Des comités, committee of protective services committee, rapport numéro 17, le comité de...
Rapport 17, committee of protective services committee.
Improvement programme, fond pour l'instruction sociale, programme de logement social. Nous avons trois recommandations, portées. Le prochain item est 4, Carlington Mountain Bike Park, air de vélo de montage de parc Carlington. Hold. Ok, revenons à ça. Planning Committee, rapport numéro 31A, rapport numéro 31A, le comité de réhabillement, charge de développement, plainte 300 Green Bank Road, plainte concernant 300 chemin Green Bank. Portée. Désigné par conseiller Shirelli. Vous voulez charger le plus, c'est tout ? 2015, analyse des terres de travail, examen sur les terrains destinés à l'emploi 2015. Portée. Conseiller Harder, un item court ou devons-nous le garder ?
Je veux... Je n'ai pas besoin de le garder si personne a des questions, mais je veux parler de ça. Voulez-vous que je le fasse maintenant ?
Quelqu'un veut parler de ça ? Conseiller Harder, alors ?
Ok. La recherche des terres de travail est un outil pour la construction de villes. Cette étude a commencé avec les conseillers sur le planning committee demandant si nous avions les bons terres designés dans les bons endroits pour la technologie et le développement industriel que nous espérons voir dans le futur. Au froid de 2013, le Conseil a accepté cette analyse de terres de logement vacantes, la première analyse de ce type depuis l'amalgamation municipale en 2001. Le rapport résultant conclut que notre stratégie pour le développement de parkings de business a besoin de fine tune. Le fait est que certaines des terres qui sont fixées pour le développement industriel ne seront jamais utilisées pour ce but, mais pourraient être utilisées pour d'autres objectifs de développement à l'intérieur de la limite urbaine existante. D'autres terres de travail seront développées comme prévu et doivent être protégées dans notre plan de location et officiel. Il est également clair de cette étude que nous devons commencer à prendre une vue de la ville en gros de la nouvelle développement de business. Pour trop longtemps, nous avons été en train de frapper à chaque pièce géographique de la ville, en obtenant sa part égale de croissance de business, un manque de temps depuis les jours précédents de l'amalgamation municipale. Mais nous sommes une ville et quand quelque chose de bon se passe dans une partie d'Autreuil, nous profitons tous. Au lieu de plusieurs parties de la ville se disputant l'une contre l'autre pour une chance de nouveaux développements de business, maintenant est le temps d'un regard coordonné stratégique des locations qui ont un sens pour l'industrie et la technologie. Les consultants recommandent que la ville retire la designation de certaines terres comme area de commercialisation, qui sont censés être une mixture de travail et de utilisation résidentielle. Ces areas de commercialisation n'ont pas fonctionné comme prévu et ont prouvé confusion. Ce rapport recommande aussi de relaxer les règles de location pour les usages de terres ancilières à l'intérieur des parkings de business. Le planning committee a donné direction à assurer que tous les changements dans ce sens ne font pas mal de magasins et restaurants qui ont été établis près. En novembre, nous aurons un rapport de personnel proposant des changements spécifiques au plan officiel en fonction de la recherche des terres de travail. Ce travail est en lien avec les projections de croissance de nouvelles projections pour Ottawa pour population, jobs et logement, qui sera le sujet d'une réunion publique ici à la salle de la ville demain soir. Je vais juste ajouter que la recherche des terres de travail satisfait l'un des exigences du bureau municipal d'Ontario pour résoudre les appeals inépuisables à notre plan officiel. Je crois que tous les conseillers sont prêts à voir nous éliminer les appeals à notre plan officiel actuel et avancer. Merci, M. Le Maire.
Très bien, je veux vous remercier conseiller Harder. Je sais que vous et le personnel et le comité ont travaillé très dur sur ça et c'est très grande partie de notre stratégie de construction de ville pour développer la ville sensiblement et avec soin. Donc, je remercie ça. Sur le rapport, porté. Social infrastructure fund, investissement dans la logement affordable. Porté. Merci au gouvernement fédéral. Aménagement de location 421 Bessera Street, modification de règlement de la zone, cat de Bessera, recommandation de comité. Porté. Et puis la résumé de la rédaction écrite et orale. Porté. Item numéro 9, report de financement et de construction de Goulburn Forest Road de Key Rock à Walden Sud et Walden Nord à Terry Fox Drive. Rapport plumbinaire, conception et construction de chemin Goulburn Forest de Key Rock à Walden Sud et de Walden Nord à la promenade Terry Fox. Porté. Conseiller Wilkinson, vous êtes un historien de Canada, pourquoi est-ce appelé Goulburn Forest Road ?
Un road forcé est quand ils ont fait les enquêtes originales, ils ont fait des lignes droites et les premiers étaient intelligents, ils sont allés avec le terrain et donc ils ont forcé leur chemin. Et quand ces routes existent, c'est seulement la portion parcourue que nous possédons. Donc, vous n'avez pas de recours à chacun de ces lignes. Donc, celui-ci va changer son nom finalement, je pense, parce qu'il ne peut plus être forcé quand nous avons la nouvelle ligne.
Je pense que le conseiller Chantier a un point...
M. Le Maire, vous remarquez que mon collègue a essayé de répondre à vous. La question est pourquoi il s'appelle Goulburn parce qu'ils ont volé ces terres de Goulburn pour créer Canada.
Ça a été de March Township à Goulburn, c'était une route.
Ça va toujours retourner à March Township, un conseil ravi à l'époque. Donc, sur le rapport, porté. Y a-t-il quelqu'un qui souhaite supprimer quelque chose de la planification de consentement en bref ? Sur la planification en bref comme présenté, donc nous allons revenir à l'item qui a été conservé par conseiller Brockington. C'est le parc Carlington Mountain Bike Park, air de vélo de montagne de parc Carlington. Conseiller Brockington, vous avez demandé que nous le gardions, le plan est votre.
Merci, votre père et bonjour encore. L'item a été discuté et entendu à la committee of protective services this month, an hour and forty-five minutes of debate and discussion. C'est en essence une partenariat entre l'Autreuil Mountain Bike Association and the city of Ottawa to develop on a small portion of the Carlington hill a mountain bike skills and pump track area. There has been significant amount of discussion and debate and comments exchanged in the community and the committee is recommending that council endorse this today. Since the committee meeting and the reason why I held this today is I wanted to follow up primarily on a concern about the lands and whether or not any species were at risk from this development. Again, the development is quite small in comparison to the entire hill, but it's best to identify these issues before we make a decision. So my questions are to the GM of Parks and Recreation. There were six species identified that could be at risk. Brown bat, tricolored bat, barn swallow, chimney swift, common night hawk, monarch butterfly and even the butternut tree. The area in question is on grassland, not in woods, no trees are going to be coming down, but it's important to have identified these in advance and I wanted to get comment from staff whether the design, the development, the construction would negatively impact any of these species that I just listed or any others.
M. Le Maire, Carlington Park is a fairly large park and the species that the councillor has referred to largely relate to a portion of the park on the eastern edge which has some environmental sensitivities. The proposal for the mountain bike park that we're talking about today is at the top of the hill to the west side of the park and in identifying a location, we were quite careful to stay, first of all, to stay away from what is referred to as Carlington Woods, but also to delineate the required 30 meter buffer for the area. We have had some consultations with our colleagues over in planning and growth management which are here with me today. Perhaps they would like to comment more specifically about those species and the impact on the on this project.
M. Le Maire, conseiller, the species listed, it's true, are not likely to be residing on the property where the mountain bike proposal is established at, but there's a possibility that some of them may forage over the open areas of the park. That use will not be interfered with by the proposal. The airspace above the park will remain, so the species will be able to continue foraging. And we do not anticipate there to be adverse effects on the species at risk if in fact they are using the airspace above that part of the park.
Merci pour ça. Can staff clarify just the design elements, the whole process to design the park? How engaged will the city of Ottawa be with the design, overseeing the design, monitoring the design, making sure the standards of the trail and pipe track do meet those standards and ultimately are safe?
M. Le Maire, staff, both from my department and from planning and growth management will have close oversight of this project, much like we did with the mountain biking folks out in the South March Highlands. It will be regular contact, every aspect of the park as it's being designed and then built and then commissioned into use will benefit from staff oversight and we will make sure that all of the things that we've agreed to in terms of coming forward with this project are respected.
Très bien, merci.
Merci, conseiller Shirelli, s'il vous plaît.
Merci, votre père. Yeah, I was following up on some of the questions from committee. I was wondering if you could tell us whether there's been any kind of assessment of the impact on the actual park of having hundreds of extra people on on the hill where there won't be snow this time. Just the impact on the property.
M. Le Maire, we've looked at this from several angles. Firstly, we don't believe that this, the push track and skills area will generate crowds of hundreds of people at one time. This is a, you know, an interesting feature, but something that people have to bring their bikes to and to enjoy and primarily oriented at children and youth. We hope it will be busy, but we don't foresee that this area of the park, which is relatively underused at this point except for passive walking area, will be unduly impacted. In fact, the park itself is a premier tournament site for city baseball, has an arena and a large parking lot which is relatively underused during the summer months and provides an ideal location for any extra traffic that is generated to the site. So we don't anticipate that this particular area of the park will be overburdened or that there will be negative impact on the rest of the use of the park. Either in the summer or in the winter, as we've mentioned before, this will have no impact on the winter use of the park, which is largely for tobogganing, sledding, those kinds of things.
Okay, during competitions, will will the park generate bus traffic and extra people coming in by bus and what will the impact of that be on the area? And do we have any assessment of what the impact of that will be on the area?
The Mountain Biking Association has not specifically identified that they would be hosting competitions there, but if that were the case, I think, and we would want to capture this in an agreement with them, that there be a transportation plan that would likely include the use of the arena parking lot for any drop off and pickup of participants in that in that activity.
What about the impact of for people who don't go by bus and don't go by bike? What is the impact? Has there been any assessment of the impact of street on-street traffic, on-street parking resulting from this?
We have not done a traffic impact study of this. As I said, the likely additional vehicles generated to this site are not likely to be much higher than what is currently there for the existing activities in the park, whether... whether it be wintertime sledding. It is a fairly attractive citywide feature during the winter months, and as a baseball center in the summertime. We don't anticipate a huge increase based on there being a dirt bike trail at this location.
And from the public consultation component of this, what were the two or three main comments or concerns that you received from the public?
Mr. Mayor, there were a variety of comments received, probably categorized as loss of the passive nature of the park for those who were enjoying it currently, to walk their dog, or simply use it as a place to go and look over the city. There was certainly the issue of the environment that's been mentioned, and any impact on species at risk. That was largely focused on the fact that the initial plan, which was much more ambitious, included features in other parts of the park, but Phase One has addressed that by uniquely staying away from that area. And then probably, to some degree, the traffic neighborhood impacts that might be occasioned by heavy use of the site.
Okay, I will listen to the questions from the other councillors and see where Councilor Brockington thinks he wants to go on this as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councilor Tschernyko, please.
Thanks very much. Like all my colleagues, we all had a previous life before we came to council, and mine just so happened to be on the environmental impact of sports events and sports facilities. So I know that the whole mountain biking movement, if you will, or on the whole mountain biking organizations suffered in their early days from a bit of a yahoo reputation, and quite strikingly, worldwide got a grip on that and actually became an example of how a sport could be very much self-governing and operate far more sustainably, respect for the rights of the lands that they were on, and actually participating regularly in erosion control, in reparations to tracks, and actually, in some cases, ecological improvements. So I believe that Omba, the Ottawa Mountain Bike Association, subscribes to the INBA, International Associations Leave No Trace ethic. Is that right? Are we aware of that, and have they brought that up as part of their ethic?
Mr. Mayor, we are aware, and yes, they do. And in fact, they don't only do it in words, they do it in action. We have a fairly long relationship with them at the South March Highlands, and they have been extremely good partners, not only in the designs that they've brought to that facility, but also their ongoing maintenance, education, and how they program the site in a very responsible way. So I think they have fully bought into an environmentally sensitive approach to all the work that they do, and in fact, have talked about, in the case of the Carlington project, using everything they've learned in the South March Highlands to apply it to the design and operation of the park.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to confirm that. Is there a commitment then, an ongoing maintenance commitment here? Help me understand who governs, and whether there is actually in any way, are there eyes and ears on this park? How is it working? Is it self-governing? Does the city continue to have a role, ensuring that the proponent here fulfills their commitment?
Mr. Mayor, there's probably a few layers of this. First of all, the commitments of all parties will be captured in an agreement before any of this work starts, and one of the things that we will be doing is fleshing out the Mountain Biking Association's commitment to the construction and then the ongoing maintenance of the features. The community itself is asked to be involved in both the build and the ongoing maintenance and programming of the site, and so we will want to capture that as well, as early as possible into the process. And then, of course, the city, like it does with features like skateboard parks, toboggan hills, or any other like features, we will have regular inspections carried out by city staff to make sure that any identified hazards or maintenance requirements are addressed promptly.
Thank you. Can that be, I suppose, given as direction, or was it already an intention that that would be a mandatory part of that agreement, that before such an agreement is signed, that that be clear?
Mr. Mayor, it is a foundational piece of our negotiation with the mountain biking folks, so we fully intend to have them engaged, not only at the beginning in building this, but for the ongoing, making sure that this remains a safe and enjoyable innovative feature for the users.
Thank you. Final couple of questions. Loss of tree canopy. Is there any expected loss of tree canopy, need for cutting in this first phase? I'll ask questions about future phases.
Mr. Mayor, there are no trees in this area. It is a clear area of parkland that is essentially grass at this time.
Okay, which gets to my next phases, I gather. There are other phases that are proposed. At this point, what is the city committing to, and what would be the process to evaluate future phases and expansion of tracks and use?
The commitment today is simply for Phase One, so the push track and the skills area at the top of the hill. Should any future development of the park be desirable, required? We will evaluate, in accordance with Councilor Brockington's motion, we will evaluate between now and the fall of 2018, how this feature is going, how the Mountain Biking Association is performing in terms of a partner, and should there be a desire to move on to do any of the other features that were proposed in the initial stages? We would go back to the community for consultation, and then we would come back to the Community and Protective Services and council for an approval of whatever other features that might be.
Thank you. I'm pleased to support this then. I know that there have been plenty of cases. We have our own experience, as you say, with other city facilities of this sort, in fact, much larger, where the mountain biking community in Omba has been a very good corporate citizen would perhaps be the wrong word for it, but engaged group. And I hope this will be a case where they will demonstrate that they can be extremely responsible managers, and from what I understand, it's really incumbent on them, the onus is on them to do that, because we will all be watching carefully for future phases, and should they fail to do that, of course, we'll, I think, look less charitably on future phases. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilor Wilkinson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to comment about some of the experiences in the South March Highlands, and that land, part of it is in my ward, the big part is in Eli's ward. We were doing a management plan there about ten years ago for the natural environment lands, so these are very important environmental lands and very sensitive. And the city didn't have the funds to, in fact, do very much there. And the mountain bikers came out and drove to the meeting and said, "We're in there, we're using it now, we want to continue to use it." So what the city did was, in fact, use them to create protection for the environment, which is a little bit what Chair Tschernyko has just been saying. They agreed to look after the trails, to put in areas where it was wetlands, they built a number of different things, and they got the people to go off making new trails through the woods. The city designated certain highly protected areas we didn't want people going into because of the terrain in there was very sensitive for many of the creatures that are in there, and they have kept people out of there. So what they have done is they've taken, and they've actually become the managers for the city in there. And they're doing, in the park behind the Richcraft Center, which is in Chilian Woods, they have been going in there and helping create the trail system in that area as well, so you can go out of the city's recreation facility and enter this trail system. And it's been wonderful. In the summer, I have some junior rangers we hire, they've been taking youth into that and letting them understand about the environment. I don't think a lot of that would have happened properly without the work of the Mountain Bike Association, and they do police it. And we don't have parking very well for them there, but they have been very good about making sure people, we've had some discussions, and so has Councilor El Shantiri, on issues that came on that, and we've come up with a solution for that. And where the new parking lot is going in now on weekends, it'd be nice, very handy, they can go right from there into the woods. So it really is a partnership, and I think if you get this in the agreement, that you'll find that actually it's extremely beneficial in actually protecting the environment as much as it is providing a very useful outdoor activity for people's fitness, which we all want to make sure happens. So just wanted to say, it's been a good relationship, but I think Councilor El Shantiri probably would say the same thing. He's had many connections with them as well, and I really found that that has been beneficial all around.
Thank you. Councilor Cadri, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just got one question. In terms of during construction, if there's any damage to the EPA lands, will the, you know, Ottawa Mountain Bike Association be responsible for that? And if so, how are we going to get them to fix any construction damage, either to the EP lands or as well as to the rest of the area?
Mr. Mayor, first of all, the agreement that we will negotiate with them will include remediation of any damage they caused to the park in constructing this. But it's not our intent to let them anywhere near the environmental lands. The environmental lands are to the east of the park. We anticipate that the construction of this would come through the south end off of Morissette Avenue, up where the water reservoir is, and towards the back to the top of the hill. There may be incidental damage that happens along the pathway that they follow there, but that would be remediated as part of the cleanup once they are done construction. No intent to authorize any use of the environmental area as part of building this park.
So those instructions about incidental occurrences have been provided to the Ottawa Mountain Bike Association?
Yes, and it'll be included in the contract that we ultimately sign with them.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Councilor Cadri. Conseilé Florys.
Mr. Mayor, just want to follow up on the discussion, and it actually stemmed from committee. So as part of the construction, this is a local group that brings it forward. I want to understand the risk and securities that we have onto the city. We talked last time about the cash and lieu portion, which wouldn't cover the full amount, but, you know, when there is development, we require securities. In this case, obviously, it's for parkland, it's from community efforts, but what if the efforts become too big and the group can't pull it off? What is the financial risk onto the city?
Mr. Mayor, first of all, this is a volunteer group, and so most of the work and the effort that's going into this is either volunteer labor or sponsors that support this. What we're talking about essentially is to build a track and jumps out of dirt. So the risk will be that we could, should their efforts, volunteers peter out or for some reason, that we are left with either an incomplete or an abandoned pile of dirt. But as we've mentioned, this group has a longstanding, strong operational presence in the city, has a good base of volunteers. We will be monitoring every step of the way, so we would not be looking at a performance bond or securities of that type from a volunteer group. But we would be watching closely as the project progresses, and if there's any indication that things have gone awry, then we would address that to mitigate any impact on the city. But ultimately, what the remediation here would be to flatten everything out and reseed it so that it returns to a grass field. Thank you.
All right, and I believe our last speaker is the Chair of Transportation, Councilor Egli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question and a comment. I'm curious as to when the city first looked at the issues of species at risk in this location. Was that looked at before you came to CPS, or was it in reaction to emails and concerns raised by the community since CPS?
Mr. Mayor, we have known about the species at risk in the environmentally sensitive area for some time. This is not the first proposal to come to the city for Carlington Park. There has been, over the years, several attempts at different commercial and non-commercial, a water slide, a tubing, winter tubing operation, those kinds of things. And we have always steered away from any development in that part. It is separately designated on the east side of the park. We are aware that it needs to be protected, and, you know, from day one, we made that obvious to the mountain biking folks that there were limitations on what could be done there.
Sorry, just, you said, I just want to clarify, you said you've always steered away from any kind of development in that park?
Well, certainly in previous proposals, we have never considered putting any active development in that part of the park. It is the Carlington Woods, it is a treed area, and by and large, has not been the interest. What has been of interest is the open hill and the top plateau, for the most part. The east side of the park, which is the wooded area, generally has not figured prominently in anybody's proposal. Now, in this case, there was a last phase that looked at potentially putting something through that area, down to, towards the residential area, but that was always looked at as, you know, a future phase that would really have to be looked at with the environmental considerations in mind. Okay, thanks for that. So I won't be supporting this. I didn't support it at committee. I had some real concerns about the consultation process, and this is not a comment on whether there should be a bike facility there or not, nor on the efforts of staff. But we heard very clearly at committee that there were some real concerns around who was consulted, how they were consulted, who was allowed to vote from the community on the proposal, who wasn't allowed to vote. I've had an opportunity to speak to some community members between the CPS meeting and today. I've not been given any indication that any of those issues that were raised have been addressed in the interim by the community association or any other stakeholder in this group. So the same concerns that I had at the committee meeting around process and how we got here still concern me, they haven't been addressed. I know they still concern the community. I think we're being asked to sign off on something, I'm not sure how it got here, frankly. This is normally something I think will be dealt with locally, but it is in front of us. And being in front of us, I'm reluctant to sign off on something where we don't have all the details, and where we also don't have, I think, a proper consultation process that was carried out whereby not just the community association, but everybody who lives in that area, and adjoining community associations could be properly canvassed on the issues. So I will not be supporting this this morning.
Okay, I thought we had our final. Councilor El Shantiri.
The final, final, Mr. Mayor. Just to my colleague around the table, as the rural area, we know we have quite a bit of trail, whether snowmobile trail or bike, mountain bike. Just wanted to know, there's no way you can police those areas under any circumstances. So the best way to do, work with those organizations, and be on a table and hold them accountable. And we saw from past experience, the best way to do, whether it's mobile trail through our forests or the mountain bike, is have them on a table and work with them, and they are policing it themselves. And they're staying on a trail, and we'd have a lot less damage today than we had twenty years ago in Torbaltin Forest or in South March area because of the relationship we build with the clubs and the membership of those. So I caution you, do nothing and leave it open like this. So then you are open, really, to the illegal activities on it, and there's no way, you can send me an email and say, "Send the police over to watch a mountain biker on somewhere." Please, let's work with those groups and find a solution for it.
Okay, so we have the motion before us. On the motion as presented, carried, dissent by Councilors Shirelli and Egli. Thank you. Okay. Okay, we have motion by Councilor Cloutier, seconded by Councilor Wilkinson, with respect to going in camera for a collective bargaining item. Councilor Cloutier, please.
Qu'il soit résolu de suspendre les règles. May it be considered that we suspend the rules in order to allow the personnel to advise the municipality on the agreement of the renewal of the collective agreement concluded with the local 503 inside outside of the Canadian Union of Public Employees.
On camera pursuant to procedure by law 2014-441-131D, labor relations or employee negotiations in subject... in subsection 13-1F, the receiving of advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose with respect to the tentative agreement reached for the renewal of the QP 503 collective agreement.
So on the motion, carried. We'll now take a five-minute recess before moving in camera. I'd ask that the room be cleared and that staff who do not need to be present, please leave the room as well. And please remember to bring all your belongings.